It worked, it worked. Okay, Asbury Park Blues and Brews Fest, July 18th, noon to 8:00 PM in Bradley Park. This is an event that, this is the third year they've done this. And it's a very good event. Basically music, and they have a beer tent. The only thing we don't know right now, last year they rented both parks and used Atlantic Park for their vendors. They haven't indicated whether they're going to take the second park or not. Any questions on that?
I have one question, and if you say that it's something that can't be done because when the Special Events Committee needs. So obviously the application says like $50, but when you close off streets and you do services, it goes a lot higher. Is that something you decide and could be put on this app if we redid it? Because when I look at Brews and Brews, I think, I know, I know we make more than $50 on that.
Oh yeah, well, the, the only thing that's on there is what we've collected so far. And that's exactly what I was talking about. If they rent Bradley Park, that's one fee. If they rent both parks, that's two park fees, and then we also charge them for a road closing. So they haven't decided whether they're going to use that or not.
So is that oftentimes not decided by the time this comes in front of us?
It just depends. Sometimes it is, a lot of times it's not, because some of these events, we just do sort of a preliminary thing and then invite them back in, like after they, they get the bands lined up and things like that. But if we know it, we put it on the application.
It, it's more at this point to reserve the date. We have no problem with the date, we have no problem with the event. But all the, what they have to pay fire, police, DPW, will, will be back to another meeting, and that, that will be worked out.
I'd be happy to bring that information too, if you want.
No, I'll email the ones that I'm, I'm curious about.
Okay.
Thanks.
The next one is the St. Jude's Walk. This is another great event which came to Asbury Park for the first time last year. Take place September 26th from 9:00 AM to 12:00 PM. And basically they walk on the boardwalk and out through Ocean Grove and back. It's a good event. People usually hang around in town, so it's a, it's a good event for, for us. They're expecting at least 800 people. I'm pretty confident they're going to get more than that. Questions on that? The next one is Sandy Paws. This is a new event brought to us by Clean Ocean Action. Take place October 10th, 8:00 AM to 1:00 PM. What they'd like to do, and again, they haven't really decided on all the areas that they want to use yet, but they'd like to have a dog walk on the beach, and at the same time, a beach cleaning, very much similar to what Clean Ocean Action does twice a year for us. And then they're going to have some related vendors on the boardwalk, like Rescue Ridge, Wagon Inn, people like that. So it's basically going to be a dog event, but the beneficiary will be Clean Ocean Action for that event. Any questions on that? Well, I just have one, one thing that I'd like to ask you. Last meeting, we tabled an event from Rue Events, which it's my fault that it's not on this agenda, but I'd like to bring it up again and see if we could just approve the date. This is a, an event. I have the application here if you want to take a look at it.
I'll take a look.
This is an event that, it's a festival that takes place in front of Wesley Grove. We asked the applicant to check with Wesley Grove to see if they had any problems, because you know, we've had some events in front of Wesley Grove. Been a little problematic. We did check with them and got some feedback that it was okay. But as you know, the business community was here last time, and they were pretty concerned about closing any of the streets down there, so.
Where's the feedback? It's opaque.
Anyway, I'm not asking you to approve the location. The applicant also indicated that if this didn't work, they'd be willing to do it in Bradley Park. Bradley Park is available that day. So what I'd like to ask you is just to approve the date, so that the applicant, which is Rue Events, would be able to get started, at least contracting with some bands and things like that, and sponsorships.
I have no problem with that. We're approving the date, and the site will be determined later, when we get more information.
That's fine.
Okay, thank you very much.
Okay, under letter C, presentations, our first presentation will be approval of awards for your 2015 community development block grant funding behind Cassandra Dickerson.
As you may know, the department is finalizing its five-year consolidated plan. And in order to do that, we have to include in the plan how we're going to spend the funding. Before you, is a list of applicants, and the committee is asking that you review and approve those. And I have Tom Gilmore and Deputy Mayor Quinn, who sat on the committee here, to answer any questions that you may have.
So just to give a little background, if you did, for the public. The CDVG committee put together a very ad hoc committee. There's a certain amount of funding for public training slash kind of education programs. It's capital, a certain amount. And we solicited people to apply for the grant funding. Over a two and a half, I think almost three-week period, we went through as a committee, there's several other community members on the committee. We went through all of the applications. We had a scale that we created and took from, I think, Monmouth County, CDVG. And we rated each of the applications. When we got to the number of highest rated ones, we brought those people in to ask specific questions about their applications. These are the people who went through, who scored high on the scale, and then when they came in and presented, they had a very comprehensive plan for the CDVG money and the type of programming they were going to do. So if anyone has any questions, that's it.
No, I think it was a great idea to form a committee and to do this more professionally than in the past. And a lot of public input into it, and I appreciate all your work.
We had a committee member who's in the audience who sat in through the presentations. We had Susan Maynard, we had two, two residents. We had somebody from DPW on the committee. In the past, there's not been a committee, so this was a time to bring a more transparent process to the CDVG money.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Your second presentation, alright, redevelopment, alright, city review with Madison Asbury Retail. Alright, the proposed food truck course, Don Sam.
Thank you. I'm going to give you a brief background and then introduce representatives from Madison Asbury Retail. Madison Asbury Retail has made application to the city to create what they're calling a food truck course, which is basically on the green space at the end of Sixth Avenue, between Ocean Avenue and the boardwalk. Propose there a total of six food, food trucks to be placed there, and some areas for amusements, as well as some picnic seating. The property is in the so-called boardwalk area of the waterfront redevelopment area. And the redevelopment plan describes this space, amongst others, between the boardwalk and Ocean Avenue, as open spaces. And says, "The open spaces between the boardwalk pavilions will be developed as either passive or active recreation areas." Passive recreation being something like Library Square Park. A park where you go in, you stroll, you, you sit, or maybe have a picnic. Active recreation being something more like a ball field or a sports field. The plan even states that active recreation will include things like miniature golf, bocce, and children's play areas. This particular property is leased to Madison Asbury Retail by the city. The city still retains ownership of it, but there is a long-term lease for the property to Madison Asbury Retail.
How long?
Twenty-four years, six months.
Renewal period.
I got that right.
It's a 99, 99. Alright, thank you.
Twenty-four years, six months is the, the lease period. Now, the, the lease actually further lists the permitted uses of the space, which include preparation of sale, preparation and sale of food and beverages, as well as commercial recreational entertainment purposes. So the use itself proposed by the applicant is consistent with these provisions in the lease and the plan. Why is this for you? While you are acting in your role as redevelopment entity for the city of Asbury Park, and the redevelopment plan says that all projects in the, all construction projects in the redevelopment area go to you for conceptual approval. So you have to look at, is the project concept consistent with the principles, the tenants contained in the waterfront redevelopment plan? I've provided for you the tech to review committee's report, and all their comments and recommendations, as well as some comments I had. And with that, I will introduce the Madison team, including Greg Vella, representing Madison Marquette, Madison Asbury Retail, their attorney. Anselm Fusco is here from Madison Asbury, Carrie Turner from Madison Asbury, John Mulli, is I pronouncing that correctly? And Robert Curly from Mazur Consulting. With that, I will turn it over, unless there are questions for me at this point.
No, but you're going to stay around, right?
Yeah, I'll stay for the presentation.
Can, can we cut to the chase a little bit before they make the presentation? You, you, you sent us questions that were asked by TRC and had not been answered as a project. So have those questions been answered? And if not, are they going to be answered tonight?
Well, they'll be, they have not been answered to me. Whether they'll be answered tonight, I'll leave to Madison Asbury.
We're, we're going to address all the issues we can tonight from you. They can be for determination of the conceptual issue. A lot of these issues or questions are really for site plan approval, like cap for permit. And the latest installation of a light rack's going to be. But we're here tonight to provide all the appropriate answers and questions for what your job in this whole redevelopment agency is going to, is part of.
Can I ask you a question? I'm sorry, I forget your name.
I, you have a chance to say it. You need to, as the mayor represents the council, and my name is Gregory Vella, from Collins, Vella, Cassello. God bless you. On behalf of Mayor Marquette.
Okay, do you mind if I call you Gregory? And you can call me John.
That's fine, that's fine.
So Greg, did you get a list of all Don's concerns?
We have a copy, we have a copy.
What hasn't been answered to TRC and hasn't been provided to council yet?
Yeah, we have a copy, I have a copy of the fourth third report. And we're, we're here to answer those questions. Anything you need, provide that both to you and the planning board as we proceed.
Okay.
Don, I have one question for you.
Yes.
Is there any other city around the shore that have these trucks? Is Delmar, if I'm not mistaken, have it? Are they on the beach?
I, I can't answer for certain.
Yeah, I was just curious. We, we'd be the only one to have these.
Okay, we'll hear from the public later, but thank you. Gregory?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, John. We're here tonight, as you just heard, as part of the redevelopment process. This is not the VU on Ed Dol. The council's not here approving what we're proposing. That's as important as possible to it. But we're here today just to give the council an idea what we're planning, and whether what we're planning is consistent with the waterfront redevelopment. And the next step is we're going to provide you, go over our plan, concerns, address those issues with you. We asked the board to say conceptually, it meets the intent of the waterfront redevelopment plan. And obviously, the intent is, is implied in all the uses that are permitted and what was permitted for these properties. Specifically, preparation of food and sales are permitted. That's what we're proposing. Entertainment, amusement area is a permitted use. We're proposing that. What we're not, we're not proposing is permanent structures, because you prohibited that. And that's kind of the part to fit into the picture of what you guys decided was a permitted use for this area. We're fitting into uses that fit your particular use in that area. So we're really just here saying, this is what we're doing. We're meeting all the intent and the purposes, and we're asking for your conceptual and some of the little technical issues. We then go to the planning board for delivery, site plan approval, those property owners and all that effect. So we're here, it's just kind of the second step, after here's a meeting, to go over and to present you with what we're doing that meets the waterfront redevelopment to move forward to the planning board.
Right, so just a quick question. Maybe this is for Don. Are we looking at it through the lens of the waterfront redevelopment plan or the lease? Right, that's the document that's going to determine if it fits in or not. Not the lease, not what the lease language says.
Well, I mean, the, you may want to make that part of the review, but in part of the discussion. But at least your, your role here is for, is it in line conceptually with what the waterfront redevelopment plan says?
Right, okay, I just want to clarify.
I think we've kind of over the little stuff, right? So first, first I want to have Mr. Fusco who's going to come testify as kind of the overall idea and what the conceptual plan is as to what we're proposing.
That's correct. Excuse me, that's correct. Mr. Mayor, to your question, we are still working on the fence detail and the lighting details. These are, these are some of the things that were in the letter that we got this morning as far as questions that remain open. We certainly will have that resolved by the time we get to planning board.
Okay.
Maybe what I can do is take you through it quickly. I think, I think it's, it's been out there, and there have been comments on it already, but just take you very quickly through what we're talking about, and then, and then probably answer questions at that point. We also have Bob Curly from Mazur Engineering. Most of the time that has been spent since TRC has been focused on addressing issues of the site layout, which, which Bob can speak to. So if it's okay to just basically have this drawing that you see revised since presented to the TRC really shows how we are planning on arraying the site. And essentially, you have a couple of basic parts. The landscaped perimeter, one of the comments from the TRC had to do with some more clarity as to the ground cover and the landscaping that we are proposing. And what you can see from this drawing, which, which kind of brings that information forward, is that we're really seeing the perimeter as being handled the way the other green spaces that have been water, that have been landscaped in the waterfront. It's really, it's a perimeter of plantings, of gravel and berms. We have also, there was some question about these trucks and going back and forth. We have added a, essentially, a gravel as part of the landscape in an area where these trucks will be able to drive without eroding the soil. And, and Bob can speak to that more, more technically than I can.
Are the trucks moved in and out every day? I thought they were, they were stationary.
What we have learned in conversations with, I guess, the county?
Health Department.
Health Department and, and some of the operators is that it's really in everybody's best interest for them to come and go, maybe not every day, but on some regular basis, so that the refueling, certain of the other operational aspects take place off-site. And that sounds like something that is better from the health department's perspective, also better from the operator's perspective. So our expectation of it then really revolves around hours of operation, and that they will be there and open, serving folks on the boardwalk when we all agree they're going to be there, to the extent that they want to, at the end of that day, head off and refuel or do what they need to do. We're going to figure out how to make that work logistically, but we're, we're okay with that idea. It sounds as though, as we have dug more into this, we know that's a better way to actually operate. And, and part of what underlies some of the change to ground cover and some of that strategy, the site landscaping strategy is, as we've learned, that they, that they do better when they go on and off-site. We've sort of adjusted our plan a little bit accordingly. So talked about the, the landscaping around the perimeter, the, the grading and the, and the surface treatment for the trucks themselves. And then really, the, the remaining spots are essentially for customers. And what we see here is, again, a section of pole-mounted string lights with picnic tables, maybe some umbrellas. All of this is just kind of movable furniture. The string lights will be on poles, just sort of think of a fence pole down in the ground. There will be an area where we're leaving the grass as it's there. We see this as a lower traffic. It's not the picnic tables area. And then out at the edges, you know, we had talked about these, these game areas. As we've looked into what sort of amusements and things are out there, where we are is, is basically that, that these green and game areas will be the sort of non-regulation horseshoes, you know, the, the beanbag game that you throw and try and get it into the, into the whole bocce. It's, it's really meant to just be an area to kind of have some fun and hang out. We're not going to have, we're not going to have the sort of cart that comes up and you shoot the water and the balloon explodes kind of thing.
And those are stationary, or, or are they moved to?
Yeah, they're, yes. I mean, essentially, what, what we really think this is going to end up being is, you know, bang a couple of stakes into the ground and play horseshoes.
Okay.
You know, we, what we expect is that, you know, we're going to have somebody, whether it's a permanently stationed person or somebody who comes by once an hour. You know, we have kids working the golf course and the miniature golf. We have folks on staff who, who are working their way around the boardwalk. You know, this is going to be, again, if not permanently staffed while the, while everything's open, at least once an hour, somebody's going to come, pick up all the trash, make sure everything's under control, you know, collect the horseshoes, that's the, so, so we see this as, as being staffed and an ongoing, you know, and those, those little games are basically going to be part of that, part of that job.
How, how would the pole lights bed?
They're going to, so we're, we're still in this question of electrification. You know, the, the numbers coming back as far as providing permanent power are non-trivial. And so there's a question about the duration of the approval, frankly, relative to the cost that we would need to incur in order to actually power this thing up. It is technically possible. The alternative to running power and running power to it is to get generators, which is typically how these trucks work. They have internally, and I, I have not been speaking to the truck on it, but we have a bunch of that information that we can share with you. But the gist of it is that if we don't power up the site, what we'll do is get one of these ultra-quiet, sort of mid-50s decibel generators. And we have some, you know, we'll share some information with you on what sort of sound levels those are. But, so the answer is, it will either be, the other piece to this site, let me just, I'll come back to the generator in a second. The other piece to this site is, we have a little interior area here behind two small sections of what we are imagining is waist-high white picnic fence. Just something very straightforward, meant to screen anything that we need to store during the course of the day. Whether that's trash that our guys are going to come and pick up every hour, if these trucks generate some that they, that they can't contain internally, or in the case of, of needing to power these light bulbs, if we do end up needing to do that with the generator, that generator would also go inside this tiny little area here, essentially in the space formed by two trucks backing up against each other. It's really just a little, a little tiny service area, if you will, obscured by a fence on this side and by a proposed sign, which you see down here, which is really just meant to kind of be a backdrop for the picnic table. So yes, there's the area for the trucks, and then there's the area for the boardwalk patrons. Right now, the, like the other green spaces, this is behind white chain fence. We, we see that staying, I mean, obviously, a section where the, where the trucks come in and out. And then really, access happening from the boardwalk edge where we would open up, we would open that up, with the real focus, again, being on this area with the picnic tables, which you can sort of get a sense here of some of the, some of the things that we're looking at in terms of how we imagine this reading. Picnic tables, umbrellas, you know, the trucks, which have a kind of certain funness to them, as well as a little bit of internal light, and then string lights. You can sort of see here the idea of how the string lights and the picnic tables work together. And then here's a little bit of inspiration for the sign. And really, what we see is being something that is kind of the backdrop for this little picnic table string light area.
Excuse me, are you going to have bathrooms in quarters?
I beg your pardon?
Are you going to have bathrooms, outdoor bathrooms?
There are a number of public restrooms in Convention Hall. There is also a bathroom trailer that the city has parked about a block and a half north of this. I don't know if that's the location it's going to have this summer, but that's, that's on I-Star's property up at, up at the North End.
Which, which shuts down after beach bathing, so what are you going to do at night? What are your hours? What hours are you proposing?
The hours of operation, I'm going to point to Carrie, but, but the gist of it is regular tenant hours. We, we want these guys to function as an amenity to people on the boardwalk the way the rest of our pop-ups do and the way the rest of our businesses do.
Which is till two, two in the morning?
Let me tell you what the core hours are, and then we can get into that. I mean, we start our spring hours on April 1st, where we go to four days a week, Thursday to Sunday. Core hours being noon to 6:00 PM. Tenants are welcome to stay open later, but we, you know, that's when we want them to be open. Then we go to seven days a week on June 15th. So June 15th through Labor Day, we're seven days a week. And again, core hours then are Sunday to Thursday, 11:00 AM to 7:00 PM. Friday, Friday and Saturday, core hours are 11:00 AM to 9:00 PM. So they can shut down after that. We have allowed them to stay open later, as long as they're not violating anything. Folks have stayed open. As you know, Mogo stays open, you know, Tony stays open to catch the late-night crap. But those are the core boardwalk hours. And then past that, I'm sorry, after Labor Day, we drop right back down to four days a week, twelve steps.
And, I mean, look.
You allow them to stay open. Can we regulate them to close?
Or enforce the core hours.
Right.
Well, the, I mean, core hours are something that we do to set a minimum for them. They don't represent a maximum.
I think one of the concerns among, among many is, is the hours of operation. So I think the way we would want to do it is potentially have some kind of limitation on the hours if, if it moves forward, and is that possible, I think is the question.
I would say it depends on how much you're looking to curtail it, and whether the, the businesses themselves, you know, depending on what hours you're looking at, I mean, it might not make sense for them. And we don't know, not having tried this yet, you don't know what the activity's going to be.
And.
I know the fear is that it will be nuisance. We understand that.
Well, and I guess I just, I got the plan, but from your philosophical perspective, like what's your goal with this project? What is, what is, what's the inspiration of the goal? What are you, what are you shooting for?
Yeah, I mean, the goal here is, is, has a couple of dimensions to it. But at the end of the day, one of the things that we've heard really since we got here is that there wasn't enough activity on the North End. So somewhere in the back of our heads, that's been kind of burned into us, number one. Number two, we really see over the past number of years a significant increase in activity on the northern side of the beach. And, and frankly, we believe that it's time to, to offer some kind of amenities to the folks on the northern side of the boardwalk. So, so the goal is really to try and take the energy and the build and the momentum that we're feeling on the southern side, bring some of that programmatic activity, something to eat, to the northern side, to help kind of take that energy through Convention Hall and at the other side, that serves the interest of all of the stuff inside Convention Hall, as well as to meet what we perceive to be a growing population of folks that is using the northern side, the northern side of Convention Hall.
Right, I, I would, I would agree with that. That seems to be the need. I guess my question is, and maybe these two things can be linked. Absolutely, there's a need there. There seems like there's like a built-in solution, right, with the Sunset Pavilion. So I guess my question is, is there the potential to, if this was to be approved, have it contingent on a transition to the Sunset Pavilion? So that, because I do think that although passive and active recreation is in the waterfront, you can look at the plan, and this is not what was intended for that area. There was a beach club there, there's a pool. So it's not exactly what was envisioned. What was envisioned, I believe, was that Sunset Pavilion would potentially have this kind of option of food and, and services. So is that something that is possible, to have this as a transition period where we would move into the Sunset Pavilion on a, on a timeline?
The short answer.
To address the question, address the issue.
The short answer to that is, it is unlikely that we will be able to make the kind of commitment to a timeline. No one is more interested in seeing the Sunset Pavilion redeveloped than Madison Marquette. And I can assure you, this is a, a long conversation that people don't always intuitively understand. But the fact of the matter is, what we would love is for there to be market demand to justify the redevelopment of every inch of entitlement on this boardwalk. Every square foot should be done tomorrow, as far as we're concerned. The issue is one of balancing the cost of that development against the economic activity that it will generate. And Sunset Pavilion, in particular, is a very challenging. And Sunset Pavilion, in particular, is a very challenging building. As far as the sort of long-term fundamental redevelopment that you were talking about, it has to do with the functioning of the hotel, it has to do with the availability of parking, it has to do with finding the right kind of tenant for, as you observe, the sort of use that is contemplated on the north side of the boardwalk. All of those things, when you add them together, make it a complicated thing to predict the timing of?
I, I'm sorry, I don't understand anything you're saying. The Sunset Pavilion is dependent on what hotel?
There's a hotel across the street.
The Berkeley?
Yes, a lot of conversations.
So, what about building the Sunset Hotel as dependent on the Berkeley? How, what's that relationship?
Because many of the programmatic elements that are contemplated for Sunset historically, including beach club, spa, et cetera, are very sympathetic to the use of the Berkeley, or uses which, were they to occur in the Berkeley, would die in the Sunset Pavilion. So, the ultimate redevelopment, remembering there was a bridge that connected the two originally, the two are very closely connected programmatically historically. And so, coming up with the right strategy for what to do with Sunset depends in some ways upon having an understanding of what's happening at the Berkeley, maybe even working together with the Berkeley.
So, I guess...
I don't understand.
I guess we've...
I don't understand.
So, the short answer, let me ask, let me answer the question. The question is, if approval of this is contingent upon some kind of approximate timeframe for the Sunset Pavilion, then the answer is going to have to be no.
Okay.
You can't take the two.
It just seemed like you identified a need, you identified a desire, and it felt to me like there could be a match there in a transition period, because you could at least set that temporarily up for, in the food, food services.
And, well...
It's possible, right, it's not out of the realm of possibility.
Well, the Sunset, again, a longer conversation.
That's what it was for 40 years.
Right, I mean, we can't say it's not possible.
There was genius pizzas, there was Coors, there was the Beach Boy, there was four different restaurants in that pavilion.
There were, and all of the plumbing and everything else is gone. And so, it's not to say, because you're right, we absolutely see this sort of food use as part of the ultimate programming of the Sunset Pavilion. I think the disconnect is in the timing. And, you know, the duration of the approval for this, I would say, is a conversation in its own right. It came up in the TRC, well, how long is this approval supposed to last? We don't want this forever, we want to see the Sunset redeveloped. We understand all of that, the point is only, you know, the nexus between the two is where it gets complicated.
And I think that, for me, is the discussion, because there's something here that needs to transition to something else. And if we can't iron that out, I'm not sure, I'm in love with this idea, but we'll see.
Well, you know, and it's, again, it's a longer conversation, we'd be happy to have it.
Yeah, it feels like we're jumping a little bit.
The reasons for the not redeveloping the Sunset Pavilion tomorrow, we can go into that.
Sure.
But it's, it's a long conversation, and it's not, you know, it's not without its complexities.
Sure.
At the end of the day, it's a hard thing to do.
Well, on Don's report dated March 3rd, on, I'm going to say, hmm, page 4, says Madison Asbury Retail should address the comments contained in the TRC report of February 24, 2015 during the presentation to Mayor and Council. Well, you're here tonight, guys, presenting, so lighting details, you haven't provided us that. Fencing details, you're not providing us that. Here's a question, has a jurisdictional determination from CAFRA been obtained?
Well, Mr...
Now, that's a question, yes or no?
Well, absolutely, absolutely not, and the reason...
Well, that was part of the TOC and Mr. Sammons.
It, it, it has, we've been in contact with NJDF. Obtaining a CAFRA determination is not something that occurs in two, in two minutes. A lot of this stuff, and I think we're getting into a planning board hearing as to rather a conceptual hearing, which is conceptual discussion at this point. The idea of a CAFRA permit would be a requirement of any approval that we'd have to obtain from DFP. A lighting plan is a review. We revise the plans, provide it to the planning board engineer for his review and approval. Those type of items for the TRC, for the technical review part, is something we're more than be modified and we're willing to provide to the planning board engineer for his full review and approval. What we understand today is that this is really a conceptual, we're not here to put you, dot all the i's and cross all the t's. That's not how the process works, is, we can't get to that point until we get past you. So, it's all...
What happens if you don't get past us?
We, if we don't get past us, we never go to the planning board, and then this doesn't get built. So, it's, it's the way the process works. It's not like a regular application, I want to build a restaurant, I file an application for the planning board, I get a hearing and everything else. So, this is a waterfront redevelopment, we come to you and say, hey, your redevelopment plan provides a certain parameter. We're coming to you saying, listen, this is conceptual, and this is the idea we have. We'd like your comments, find it consistent, and for example, the term, whether it's two years, four years, those are acceptable conversations for a planning board approval to put limitations on. So, I can understand that you don't want this as a long-term feature over there, and you want redevelopment over the pavilion. That would be very consistent with saying, yes, as conceptual, it is, it meets it, but we request the planning board to put a limitation of time as to this type of use, because we want the pavilion to be redeveloped, and we don't want to leave this in as a crutch so something doesn't get built. So, I believe that that's the appropriate response, is tell the planning board, on your approval, if you approve a planning board, we really want you to put a limitation on the amount of years, so we really want the pavilion to be developed. That is reasonable, and that's kind of part of your function. It's not here to say, conceptually, it's okay, you're limited to, only do it for next year.
But you're asking us to do something that Nancy Sump just said isn't, there is no, you, we give you this and then you move to this, right? There is no ability to do that. You're saying that these food trucks are in no way, shape or form going to speed up or at least put Sunset Avenue Pavilion on the map, right? These food trucks aren't going to do that. So, you're saying that we go to planning board and say, this is temporary for Sunset Avenue Pavilion, which isn't even on the map, there's no two-year plan for Sunset Avenue, there's no four-year plan for Sunset Avenue to be built. So, it's useless information, that's a useless restriction.
I think, I think what...
Correct.
Right, I think what Craig is saying is, you guys say, when you, you refer this matter to the planning with a recommendation or a series of comments. One of your comments is, we only want to see this approved for some short number of years.
Okay.
What I'm saying is, if you say, we only want this approved for three years, and at the end of year three, they have to do the Sunset Pavilion, I'm going to have to say, thanks, but no thanks. What you can do is say, we want this approved on a short-term basis, two years, three years, four years.
But nothing happens to Sunset Avenue Pavilion at the end of those years, what am I missing?
What is the conversation you alluded to?
This conversation here, this evening, with this application, has nothing to do with the Sunset Pavilion. That, that's...
Providing food, the concept has to do with the Sunset Avenue Pavilion. The vision of the, of the north end of the boardwalk has to do with the Sunset Avenue Pavilion.
The need that you described is actually, is answered by the Sunset Avenue Pavilion. This, to me, seems only to make sense in the context of a short-term fix as we work out the Sunset Pavilion. So, if that's the conversation we need to have before, and if, when we got set up here, I was like, as the mayor said when we came in, like, what's going on? I feel like we didn't hear anything, you had a TRC, and then, like you said, it was Friday. Two days later, you're here with, going for the planning board. We haven't even had a conversation about what the vision of the north end is going to look like, and here we are, ready to go to the planning board. So, I, for me, I think that conversation needs to happen, what the vision is.
I think a major concern here, right now, is that, is this going to be a precursor to the Sunset Pavilion being eventually opened? All right, or are we looking at this as a long-term substitute for it?
We are not looking at this as a long-term substitute for anything. This and the Sunset Pavilion, different conversations, the timeframes are unrelated. There is increased traffic at the north end of the boardwalk. We believe this is a way to further help with the increasing of that traffic, which is a necessary, though not a sufficient, driver of redeveloping Sunset Pavilion.
So, that's my question, what is the necessary?
As I said, it has to do with...
Or sufficient?
...the plans for the Berkeley, it has to do with the availability of parking, off-street parking for the kinds of uses, like a beach club that would go into that building. It has to do with the macroeconomic climate, it has to do with the cost of construction. I mean, these are the things that dictate the timing of the Sunset Pavilion.
Is, and Don, you can, isn't the beach club further north?
Yes.
Beach club would be the property just to the north of the property you're speaking of.
The north, right, so the beach club, the Sunset Pavilion wasn't going to be a beach club?
No.
No, or in the original plan? Now, the vision Madison Marquette has is possibly different.
There is a conversation about the Sunset Pavilion itself as having a beach club component, as well as a fitness spot and some other things. There has also been a conversation about a pool affiliated with that use that could go on this green space.
Sure.
So, the question of the north end is one which, you know, our obligations are defined in the subsequent developer agreement we have with the city, and as to the Sunset, there's nothing immediately proximate that we have to deal with. It's really a question of what is the right use, at which point we and the city enter into a development agreement or a redevelopment agreement to address the program, the timing, and the other aspects of the redevelopment of that project. That's the next step as far as the Sunset goes. This thing right here is really not meant to be something that is taken for more than it is. It's really meant to be something about the simple objectives that I said. Responding to more people on the boardwalk, taking the energy of the south up to the north. It is, it is not a moneymaker, it's not something that we, you know, if you say to me, well, we're going to approve it for a year, that's a lot of headache. You say to me, I'm not going to give you 10 years, I say, that's fine, I don't want this thing to be here in 10 years. I don't want this thing to be here in five years, because, again, you know, separate conversation. Nobody wants the Sunset Pavilion developed more than me.
Sure, and I guess the idea is, I think that, at least from my perspective, we're hesitant to do like a piecemeal unless there is like steps, and you lay them out. This is a step, but it's not the step to get there. So, I guess, before we went, before I go ahead with this, I would want a couple of those steps outlined, as opposed to just doing this and then saying, this is going to happen down the road. Right, I'd like a map, a roadmap. If you can't give it to me now, that's fair, but I would like a roadmap at some point to how we're getting there.
As I've said, I mean, the, the, as far as Sunset Pavilion specifically...
The north end can be the discussion, a larger discussion, since it seems to all be in the context, right? They're all linked together.
It is all in the context, and I don't think we're going to get anywhere in this conversation right now as to the kind of timing that we're going to be talking about.
No, I would just say that that maybe is what is going to come out of this, is that that conversation has to happen.
We, we are very eager to have all of those conversations, because it's not just Sunset, it's the south end, it's, you know, it is all of the parts of the boardwalk in some way.
Just moving, going back to this, can you talk a little bit about the electrical power? The potential of electrical power?
Sure, so, actually, I'm not the best person to do that. I think you're probably, I mean, I can talk about it in concept, but you're probably better equipped to actually speak to... Technically, I don't really, the fact is, I don't really know, but Bob Curly here does, so maybe Bob can speak a little bit.
Part of the, excuse me, we've, you've announced the area right now. There's a wooden box that's right at the front corner of the Sunset Pavilion. That was originally set up for a proposed transformer for that building. So, it's, the conduit is already run to be able to supply the electricity to that point, and our intention would be to run wire to this point. The transformer would not be installed, it would be an electrical panel at this point. And then the electric would be fed from that pad area. There's conduit underneath of the walkway, and it would be distributed throughout the site for the individual users.
Where does the feed go into the panel on the Sunset Pavilion, is that the low ground as well?
That's correct. And it's being pulled from something walkway?
So, that would conceivably be enough electricity for the two game areas? I'm assuming, what is that power?
That would be enough electricity for...
That would be enough electricity for the trucks as well?
Yeah.
So, there wouldn't be any generators? So, there wouldn't be generators?
This is about $50,000 worth of money.
But are you saying that's definitely part of the plans, or you're going to...
No, I'm not, I'm saying...
Well, then, it's not going to get past us to planning board, I mean, that's going to be part of the deal. You're saying you can put in power, you've got the box right there, you can put it in, you can feed the trucks, you can feed the lights, you can feed everything, and we're away from the noise of the generators.
But you, you want a timeframe before you give that to me?
Yeah, if you're going to give that to me for a year, it just doesn't, it's, I mean, I'm, we're not going to make any money on this anyway, but that's, you know, that's too short a time to amortize those costs. If the conversation is, you know, give me four years, and I'll put in the power, sure, that's the answer. Two years, I have to really scratch my head and look at the kind of rents we think we can get on it.
I still go back to what Don wrote as far as the TRC report, I apologize, it was just last week or something, but you have not provided us what he says we should get before we put it to planning board.
I think the planning board are really the folks that look at the first detail.
I think, I think once we pass it on, we're dead, and then it doesn't come back to us. And then it's game over, whatever the planning board decides.
Well, that's...
And, did you guys get a package? I mean, there's a lot of like people that went to the TRC that didn't get a chance to testify, that sent letters, and they raised some very good points, as far as the noise, as far as like, this is the only residential section of the beachfront, which is now going to be...
It's the only section developed as residential currently.
Correct.
The whole beachfront's going to be residential, so this issue is...
Eventually, eventually, it could be 30 years, I mean, it could be 99 years. The 99-year lease, I mean, I looked up, you know, his poem, "Minuetta," or somebody like, you know, he bought Manhattan for $24. You guys got a 99-year lease for $20. You got a better deal than somebody in 1626 at Hasbury Park. So, I mean, you guys have us hung up for 99 years for a lousy $20 that you can do anything you want to, which to me is, I say, mm, again, if you put money into Sunset Avenue Pavilion, at least we'd get some tax ratables after your five-year positive abatement. But right now, what does the city get out of this? Nothing.
Mr. Mayor, two things, one...
Except headaches from the people complaining about the trash, the noise, the lights, the hours of operation, everything.
The zone does not permit permanent structure on this property. So, the tax effect on this property will never be anything great. It's not something that you provide, your waterfront development, you're talking about, I've just talked so much about taxes. You say you can't put buildings here, well, there's your rateable. If you can't put a building there, you can't tax anything.
And I think, I think the issue at the end of the day, Tom, is simple. It's about the fact that this is a boardwalk, and we are trying to bring back its functioning as a boardwalk. If that is not something that, sitting here right now, you think you want to see happen on this space, there are lots of ways you can kill this. I am hopeful that there's a way to make this work.
I don't necessarily think we're looking to kill it, we're looking for the answers, that, again, TRC said we should get these answers before we pass it on to the planning board, and one of them is the CAFRA. Another one is like the electricity, you're saying you can put it in, but generators. The original plan where those six trucks were going to be there stationary, now that's changed tonight for the first time ever. Another thing that's changed was like you're going to have games. Now, it's all of a sudden, is this horseshoes for free? And like, where do we get that in writing? It's going to be horseshoes for free, or it's all of a sudden, it's going to be Pac-Man and this, and video games, and, you know, something that the planning board just turned down, saying, no, if you want games, they have to be enclosed. And so, then you have put enclosed structures, because you said amusement area, define amusement area. If you, if you're going to say just...
The answer is it gets written down in the planning board.
Well, to get to the planning board, you got to convince us.
Why don't you let Don talk for, just, Don, go ahead, since you've been trying to talk.
No, thanks. One, I think, what I'm hearing the mayor and council say is that an advisory board to the planning board, and essentially them, has made a number of comments. And they want to know how Madison Asbury Retail is addressing those comments. I think that's part of going through the recommendations of the TRC one by one. I believe the mayor and council understand that, yes, the planning board is the body which ultimately will give the land use approval on this, but at the same time, they have an obligation to be sure that they're not passing along something which they aren't comfortable with. And what I'm hearing, the uncomfort level is around, hey, the TRC again, made these comments, how are you addressing them, or are you just saying, well, you know what, guys, we're going to leave that for the planning board? They want to see that you're taking the comments of the TRC into consideration, and how so? The other thing, if I can make an analogy regarding the timing, because there's a lot of discussion about it, analogy I'd like to make, maybe this in relation to, or to the surface parking lots. The surface parking lots received temporary approval. Why? Because nobody wanted the city, all that waterfront land dedicated to surface parking in perpetuity. They wanted to see those projects, that land develop projects like Wesley Grove, like North Beach. Now, it was the mayor and council... council that put the time limits on those approvals, not the planning board. So I just, I just state that to, just to show you some precedent that's been had there. So that's something you may want to consider as you're reviewing this as well. Timeframes for the length of what this is, what has been described as and presented as really a temporary solution for this space until further development occurs in the north end.
One question's never been addressed, and probably won't be addressed. Liquor. I mean, you don't have a liquor license there, but you can take your liquor license and move it 20 times a year or something like that. Is that going to be a request down the road? And if so, just bang, hit us over the head with it now.
I would certainly request it, but if...
It would be in our authority to disagree.
It's in your purview to say no.
We can say no. Just like we could have said no to them extending their liquor license onto the beach. That's our decision, not planning.
The catering of a liquor license is within your control. So do we see...
I don't know. I'm going to have to ask Mr. Hafick for that, as far as like, what he's going to call arbitrary and capricious if we say no.
No, I don't.
Okay, well, that's something, I mean, but again, something that hasn't been addressed. Same as like, the hours of operation has not been addressed.
Allow me to assert that in the...
The garbage and recycling has not been addressed. I mean, the garbage and recycling has not been addressed, and these are things that the TRC did not even ask about.
Yeah, no, they did actually. We spoke to garbage and recycling.
Well, I don't see it in the plan you sent us.
Well, I, my testimony to the TRC interview as well is that cans, appropriate receptibles will be provided on site. And I think I said earlier, if I deny, I was remiss, that we will be collecting both trash and recycling in the same regular route that we collect all of the trash from our town to the water.
Okay, maybe you did say that.
Yeah, we'll have somebody up every once in an hour.
And the bathroom is still scary. Lack of bathrooms, because again, you're right, we have the beach trailer.
This is the beach trailer.
On I-STAR property, which I know is going to be a fiasco down the road, that's another story. But, okay, when we close that down at 6 o'clock, and this place is going to 2 o'clock in the morning, where do people go to the bathroom?
Uh, in convention hall. There are all bathrooms that we maintain in convention hall, which are also...
Don't you think you should put in some other bathrooms?
It's going to be, I mean, I grew up next to a bar, it's going to be a problem. I mean, you know how it goes. My other question is, I looked at, on Nextdoor, there was a vibrant discussion of this topic. And Doug McQueen had put up some resources about effective and well, well-designed food courts or food areas like this. And they had talked about water in and out as well. Like drinking water, gray water, like, there was, there's a variety of classes of the food carts, right? So some of them are, like, do their dishes. Some of them, right, they just, they don't even need to wash their hands, because they hand out a wrapped item, right? Others have to have hand washing facilities in there, others have to have a gray water system to remove the gray water. So like, have you guys identified, are the vendors going to be needing...
They will all be self-contained. This is part of our conversation with Florida Health, is that, that there is not going to be running water on site. I mean, that will be a prohibitive expense. All of the carts, all of the trucks that we're talking to, will have the ability to deal with those issues, and this is part of why it turns out, operationally, they do better when they need...
Do you think? Because they wouldn't have those hookups. Right, right.
And frankly, all of this stuff governed by the board at the end of the day. So we are, you know, we're familiar with them, and have been able, always in the past, to work through their requirements to satisfaction. I'm sure we'll do that again here. And so I just want to go back to something that you said, you said earlier, and I agree with you that this is not going to be the forum, nor is this going to be, I, and be able to settle, I, the issues between, I, this particular project that the Sunset Pavilion, I, and, you know, I mean, it's not my job to be argumentative or adversarial here, but it is my job to, I'd be somewhat representative, at least to the city council.
Sure.
I'll argue with them later, but that's another issue. But, I, I want to go back to, all right, something that you did say. All right, we did talk about the issues of microeconomics, all right? I need to emphasize to you is that it's the council's responsibility, my responsibility is to look at, not the microeconomics, but the macroeconomics, and how it's going to...
I did say macro. I, or...
At least I meant to say macro.
In terms of the things that dictate the timing, but I...
So, it's important for us to be able to, all right, bridge that gap between, all right, your project here and the Sunset Pavilion. And I realize this is about...
All I can tell you is, again, nobody wants to see Sunset Pavilion done in the future.
I mean, that's great to say, but we need to have a little more concrete discussion about it.
It's, I...
So I think...
So how do, can we, just, just so we can move on?
Right.
So the best way for us to move on, Don, would it be for Madison Marquette to address more specifically the concerns from the TRC? Would it be better to email you our concerns? I'm sure there's going to be concerns tonight, and get them to Madison Marquette. So, so for example, the generator was a big issue. So if you're telling me now that you're not going to have a generator, that, that, that's something worth knowing for me, for me personally, because I know the generator was a big issue in terms of sound, and I called a couple of people on food trucks about generators. So, Don, not to go back into this discussion, do they shoot us information, or do we say, "Listen, we need a little clarification," or is it worth like, a meeting?
Well, I think the, your questions of the out, could be asked at this point. You know, you think you're not certain about, you'd like to see more information.
Like, the generator is a perfect example. They're not committing to a generator until we commit to a lease term, or, or not. So, they're tied together. So does that merit to move this project forward one way or another, if it, if it goes or dies, just to get it, to get a decision on it one way or the other? Is it worth meeting, having two council members meet with Madison Marquette, go through their concerns, come up with a draft, or not, or just come back to the table and say, "You know what, this isn't going to work"?
And other questions are like, do the hours, do the hours limit your, like, if the hours are just until 6 o'clock every evening, does that kill the project for you? So questions like that, that need to be addressed.
Well, I mean, the short answer is, too much time, and the folks who are going to bring these trucks are going to be somewhere else this summer. So, really, what it behooves us to do is figure out the answers, and you know what? We're all here. So, on the question of the electric issue, it's going to cost something like $50,000.
Okay.
Three years is at the limit of where we would feel we could justify that. You know, a one-year approval, $50,000 of outlay, is hard to make sense of, and that probably kills it.
But two years, 10 minutes ago, you said you would scratch your head and give it some thought.
Two years, we would have to give it some thought. Three is where, as I had penciled out what we think we can do, I would ask you to land.
Okay. So if we wanted to limit the hours, and stop the hours to your core hours, so trucks aren't driving out at 11 o'clock?
I guess the, the comment I have on that is, there is no precedent for that. This city has a way that it conducts itself regarding businesses that are in operation. Acknowledging that this is an extraordinary circumstance, it's very important that this not be perceived as a precedent for the city setting the hours of our operating businesses beyond what normally happens. Beyond the way business is conducted everywhere else in the city, and beyond the way the rest of the boardwalk functions. This is an extraordinary circumstance, but I have a hard time seeing how it's different to regulate the hours of these food trucks than it would be for you to similarly try and regulate the hours of where we build pop-ups, like we have the rest of the green space.
Pop-ups aren't driving off the lot.
Understood.
Right?
Understood, but I think it has to be explicit that that is the nature of the limitation. I think the answer is, in order, if it's going to take 10:00 PM shutting them down for this to happen, of course, that's fine. But the longer conversation is that the reason that this is being imposed is because of the specific nature of these trucks and this operating model, not because this is a different part of the boardwalk and the rules are different here. Because the boardwalk is the boardwalk, and it's well-regulated as to how, how noise ordinances are enforced and the rest of it. And I, I'm loathe to set a precedent where, because this is in a different section of the boardwalk, it somehow is subject to a whole different set of requirements that don't exist in the redevelopment plan, and that frankly, are not, I think, consistent with the intent of that. So, I mean, I'm...
So, it's, it's still a, it's a conversation, right?
You say, if it's written in such a way that because these are trucks, and you want all of the moving done by, you know, 11 o'clock at night, we want them to close at 10, that's great. That's fine.
And what are the lighting details?
You know, it's a pole, and it's got lights that, I mean, on some level, I'm not even sure how to, how to provide this information. The fact of the matter is, both the lighting and the fencing, we intend to bring to the planning board. It's not really what we used to bring in.
Why don't we have the engineer talk about the lighting? How would the lighting plan affect the local, the regular lighting plan for any site improvement? The filtration of lights off-site?
I can't sit on another meeting like this.
Our current proposal is to have string lights.
I mean, it's, it's really, it's just, I mean, in some ways, it's this simple. It's a pole in the ground, and if you, if you look in the arcade, in convention hall, if you look at what's in the beachfront, I mean, they're not even really attached fixtures, so it's, it's a hard thing to, to even know how you can specify, provide a real specificity.
So that's a lengthy thought. Where on the site would those lights be located? Where would they, what would they be strung?
There are, there are poles that are driven into the ground, the round fence posts, and then the lights are strung in this little set of squares that you see right here, over the building. And everything else is future boardwalk lighting, hard boardwalk lighting, and whatever internal illumination, all of which is facing towards the boardwalk, the trucks themselves have. And you can sort of get a sense of that.
And so, put that one back up.
Yes.
Where, I can't picture, where's the ramp going into the food court? Ramp off the boardwalk?
This is one concrete ramp, this is the other, this is the corner of Sunset, and here's the boardwalk here.
Okay, so in between, there's no, there used to be a little temporary one in someplace down there that's not in the site?
No, I don't think so.
Okay.
To the best of my knowledge, this is just a, a large grassed sand ramp.
Okay, and so, to get in, there's going to be fence around it, so you...
They're going to be coming in and out from this corner.
So you can't get in from the boardwalk?
No, you can't. Oh, you can't get in at all?
People can, the trucks can.
Yeah.
Okay, where's, where's the ramp going down? Or they jump the boardwalk and the bench as well?
It's at, it's at grade. The grading of this green space is, is at the boardwalk level, yeah.
Okay. I got to go down and take a look. It is...
I mean, to the extent that there's a little, I mean, we would obviously fill it so that, you know, but, but no, the idea is that there is currently the fencing, this is the post and weight chain.
Okay.
And we'll maintain that, and we'll open it up in the middle.
Okay.
Where, where, where folks will walk off the boardwalk at grade into the, into the seating room.
And CAFRA's on hold for now, right?
Bob, you have a quick second?
I had a conversation with Janet Stewart, and we also sent her formal letter, which copied the plan. Conversation indicated that she didn't see this as a problem, it was consistent with the waterfront development plan, and what she said. Sent me a letter, the informal non-government copy. So, it's, it's across...
Consent, it's just TDP time.
They can't unless CAFRA gives their thumbs up, they won't be able to...
So we would want a little bit more specifics about what the amusements are, unless, unless they're just literally going to be horseshoes?
It's, it's going to be stuff that you put into the grass. There are no parks coming. We've not found anybody who's interested in, and the ones who do want, rent them to you for a routine amount of money. So, if you want to just say, or if you want me to just say, it'll be grass-based handheld amusements like bocce, that beanbag game.
Cornhole.
Non-cornhole, non-metal horseshoes. That's similar things, that's fine. Yes, the big chess somewhere.
And then the bicycle rack down, right?
Yeah, so I didn't, I thought what my hearing at the TRC was that it wouldn't matter, because it wasn't in the public space.
Correct. So, are you thinking you will not have bike racks now that matches what's on public streets, it'll be...
What's on Ocean Avenue? Yeah, that's correct. This is going to have to be something freestanding, that can support itself on the ground. It's not going to be concreted in like the stuff on the sidewalk on Main Street. It will also allow for greater storage of bikes in a narrower...
And I see in your site plan, there's a specified location where you'll have, there's two locations, excuse me, where you'll have these bike racks. So you'll have, pardon for, quite a few bikes, dozen at least.
How many bikes can we fit in that?
Dozen.
At least a dozen.
At least a dozen bikes.
Look, the bike parking, we love the bike parking. We think it's a great idea. It was a great idea when it came out of TRC, and as long as there doesn't have to be those stainless steel, you know, things that are on Ocean Avenue, we're good.
The, the fencing would be in the center of the site, apart from the post and chain, which is out there. But the fencing is essentially screening what I guess you would call service area, be some trash storage. If you have generators, it'll be in there. So will it be a solid type of fence where you can't look in?
It'll be, what I imagine it to be, is a waist-high white picket fence. If you think about the thing at the Wonder Bar that keeps the dogs in and the people out at happy hour, it's, it's pretty standard, you know, you have a board, and then a gap, and then a board, and then a gap.
Will there be trash stored within that central area there?
I, I don't think that that's what happens, but I am not 100% certain how these things are.
My recommendation to council would be a six-foot tall fence, not a waist-high fence, in case there's trash stored in there, in case there's a generator in there. You don't want to see that stuff.
But the trash is going to be picked up once an hour.
Okay.
And the bags aren't going to be...
For what's...
Well, you also, you don't, I, I don't, I think... Will be picked up on a routine, on a routine, not once an hour. I agree.
But once an hour was a staff person that would plus the table.
No, 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 I agree, Karen, right.
They pick up the trash usually twice a day with the cabot, every morning.
Mm-hmm, yeah, no problem.
Let's be clear, if the cabot is not coming once an hour, that'll give you more gas.
Very usually have from these vendors, cardboard boxes, leftover refuse from the cooking process, right? You don't want that piled up next to a garbage can along the boardwalk or along Ocean Avenue. So, I'd recommend there be some trash storage in that area, or at least somewhere screened. And it should be a six-foot tall fence. That's, that's all over the board. And if you add generators, your understanding is that each individual truck would have a generator within, and then you, if it comes to that, a generator to power the overhead lights, and that generator would likely be in the center of the site, in between those three trucks.
Sorry, leave it here.
It wouldn't be half a dozen generators scattered throughout this property.
No, and look, I mean, again, three years of approval, and we'll figure out how to do the electrification. And if it's less than that, and the generators are too much of an issue, then we...
I mean, the generators, I think, are a major issue.
Get the details.
Okay.
I'm just curious, Chief of the Fire Department, do you have anything to say about this? The light floor?
We didn't, we didn't review anything. That would be, I would assume, fire department court.
Yeah, and you also have Garrett Arverson Jr. is a member of the planning board, and he provides his comments at that point as well.
What were his comments?
They'll all be...
No, it hasn't been...
Oh, right, 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 sorry.
He goes to say, "Everything will be, we'll have to pull permits for all this work, and it's going to be the way it's supposed to be."
What's your, like, make or break timeframe? Like, as far as...
I mean, this is, I don't know, this, this, this may be it. I mean, I don't know when the next, when the planning board meeting is, but...
The earliest one, I think, we have a chance.
I mean, the issue is that...
You can pay for a special one. Yes.
Or we can get you on, I mean, if, if we don't have this by Wednesday, we can get you on. We'll make sure you get on the April meeting for planning, if it goes through.
You can't do that, because it's their schedule, not ours, and they may already have people on there. So they're not going to, they're not going to count somebody else for us. I mean, we can't do that, okay?
We can get to the end of the planning, but there's a lot going on right now.
There is, that's why...
It feels late in the game to have the discussion.
You can request a special meeting at your cost, and that solves that problem. Any other questions? Any other input? And so, Greg?
That's all we've got.
No, it's mine.
Okay. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Mike. The next presentation, I'm just by Rob McPean, our Director of Property Improvement, about jungle lasers. It's a tracking, all right, GO3O software application system. I, I left a memo with Mr. McPean, my actual place, was not in the original package. a memo with Mr. McKeon from my actual place, it was not in the original package.
I'm sorry, Tony, what'd you say last?
I left a memo at your place.
Where?
It wasn't in the original package.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Good evening, Robert McKeon, I'm the Director of Property Improvement, Neighborhood Preservation, and the Director of the Code Enforcement Department. Tonight, we have a presentation that is going to be made by a company called Jungle Lasers, Inc., with regard to an application, a software application, GO3O software application that they provide throughout, through their company. They, I think they do business with a number of surrounding towns, they've been with Ocean Township for probably the last, I think, six or seven years, providing the same product. What this, this application will do, it's gonna integrate all information related to every parcel and property in the city, so that it allows all the various departments, fire, police, code, construction, DPW, they can all easily access necessary information for their specific purposes related to their operations. With regard to code enforcement and housing, it's gonna streamline the administration of our office by digitizing all processes, commencing with the first contact made in connection with applications for certificates of occupancy and transfers of title, filing of complaints relating to properties through the actual inspection process conducted by code enforcement officers. In the inspection process, the officers will be able to remotely input the data when they do their inspections, so that everything is in the system, and they come back and they'll either just spit out a certificate of occupancy or transfer of title or a denial, and it depends on what the circumstances are. Currently, all of these processes in our office, our department, are conducted manually. We, everything is transcribed, the information handwritten, applications into scheduling books, and then it's written onto inspection forms when the officer conducts the inspection, and then eventually a CO or a TOT is actually typewritten, or with a typewriter. So this is especially crucial, the software, now that we're undertaking our abandoned and vacant properties programs, because it will allow us to access easily through a network all of the information that's relevant to these programs in a second. Now, it's gonna be, it's obviously, it's important that all the other departments in the city...
So why is that important? No, I'm saying that, like, I think this is good, but why don't you tell me why that's not important particularly for the public?
Sure. So with regard to the abandoned property program specifically, I need to know if there's been any issues with fire calls, police calls, DPW, they've been out there, that translates to what's called a nuisance under the law. And the way we do it now is I call down to fire, I call down to police or code or DPW or whatever to get that information, they have to go through their files and get it together and send it up. This way, I just punch into the system, I pull up a piece of property, it gives me everything about that piece of property. And I think, you know, more importantly, probably more specific to your question, I think it's better if I let the folks from the company answer that and show you. And I also have Karen Keddie here, who from fire, who is also requesting that we use the software.
Welcome to Hot Dead from Jungle Lasers, and we will be short and sweet, we'll really try to zoom through, if you have questions, please stop us, and we have to go through that. Basically, this is online software, software in the cloud, about 35, 40 towns in the area have it. Ocean Township are showing today, but Neptune, Titten Falls, Lake Como, West Long Branch, really quite a few towns in the area are using the software. You can start in any department and eventually add all departments in. The idea being taking data out of the silos of each department which is currently residing in, and interrelating it, interrelating it across departments by parcel. So here, I'm in parcel data, you can see, when you do a quick look-up of a parcel, and on One Massape Point Road, for instance, and do a search, we'll bring up all the One Massape Point Roads, search again, and, I'm having a bad time with the internet, I apologize for that. So let me just go to the final link if I can. So basically, you're able to look at the, let's see here, yeah, we're still connected. Look at the parcel, when you look at the parcel, look at it in a way that looks at that parcel across all departments. So if I'm doing a health permit, I can see a dog license, I can see police issues there, I can see road opening permits, complaints that were made at that property or against that property, and I just seem that I lost it for some reason.
These are my specialty, but...
Is Asbury Park Finance? It's Finance.
Just tell us, just tell us, don't worry about that, just, tell us, Mark, we should get this, and then we'll shoot you some questions, okay?
Sure, you should get it because for the first time, you're able to manage across departments and actually look at a parcel in a way holistically that allows you to manage that, each department managed in a completely different way. By that, I mean, if you're waiting for information from one department, it's already there for you. It reduces communications...
And what departments does it use, Robert? Police, fire, code?
The crux of this, you're entertaining, or the system?
DPW.
Police, fire, DPW.
Destruction, code, health.
The crux of the systems is two major strengths to it. One is that it's internet-based, so that anybody out in the field, or frankly, anybody at home can access, that's authorized, can access the system to do whatever need to be done.
Well, the only people who could do that are police and fire, right? They're the only ones that would have access.
Well, housing inspection, police enforcement, DPW, fire.
No, 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 I'm saying that would have the equipment to do that out on the road. So only police, fire, and code.
Well, they could use their smartphones, or one of the options is if they had tablets, but the code enforcement officers have tablets, they can just tie in and do their inspections that way. This also ties through our, it ties through our, we just had the website.
Right, we can also enable, as we've done for Ocean Township, we can enable online forms, so that submission actually goes from the website directly into the system. Payment's a separate issue, but so that people can actually be at home, whether it's for a CO application for rental or sale, that can all be done directly through the website and entered into the system, which eliminates data entry on the...
So for the public, it's 24/7 access, eliminates coming into the offices here at specific times, allows communication with them, reducing costs for maintenance for the town, for citizens in the town, it's more efficient, it, you know, the number one reason to do 24/7 is the number of people, the takeoff time from work to come into town hall during town hall hours, it's a big burden on people, reduces, obviously, use of jet fuel, gas and things like that. It's, the online application then allows you to expand into geographic mapping, many towns have done this, I mean, Ocean is one of the biggest, maybe, ten boroughs, and they have a mandate that everybody in town, every department has to use the software. We're gonna start here in two, and, you know, as a department wishes to come on, very easy for us to add that with the several hundred applications every month.
There's also, my understanding from the presentation that they showed us, that there's a way, that we, we know where our guys are at all times, we can track, like, when they're doing inspections, if they're at an inspection, I can go on, I can find out if he's over on Summerfield doing the inspection where he's scheduled to be, and that when he's going to the next one, it'll tell us that through the software.
And what does it cost?
The proposal for code that they gave us was $5 per transaction, so it's $5 per CO, $5 per TOT.
So what does that actually mean?
We don't charge anything for this unlimited user license, there's no license fees per user.
Well, what would be our yearly bill? I don't know, I don't know how many COs we have that, when you say $5 per CO, I don't, I have no idea what that means.
You know what, I don't have that data with me, but I can get it for you.
Yeah, we would need a hard cost.
Yeah, I had it, and I didn't bring that, I had it all worked out.
It's one of several revenue models we work with a lot of local towns on, but the advantage is that there's no upfront investment, it's not like you have to spend $15,000 on software and then find out two years later if it's not doing the job for you.
So there's no setup cost?
No, we don't charge anything for setup, we don't charge anything for training, there's no user license fees, there's unlimited support, and our office is an Allenhurst, which is just...
And who manages it? Is it managed in home, or in-house, or outside? Do you manage it?
It depends on what you mean by manage.
Changing the program?
We do all that for you. We do all that through the support ticket system, if something's either broken or you want something changed, you want it redone, we don't charge extra for the modifications, we do all that at no charge.
But we would input our information, right?
Yes, we would take the initial data, any data that you have from any department, we can import it. I mean, literally from motion, I think we imported 20, 25 years' worth of data from the construction office.
So we could hand you files and say, import all of this?
Electronic files.
We don't have electronic.
You probably import your thing, for instance, you know, someone has something that sounds stretchy, you know, historic areas, sensitive natural areas, things that have been slowly fucking over the years through DDP grants, that sort of stuff, and of course, all your property data is there. So that comes in with the history of that, and it's just, you know, it starts someplace, right? This is the whiteboard, you throw everything up against it and sticks, and then it's related.
And so $5 per transaction, so a CO is a transaction, a TOT is a transaction, if the fire goes out and puts in an issue for a fire problem at a house, and code goes out and does an issue at the same house, are those separate transactions, the $5 charges?
Caffrey got a different proposal than we got, they have their own.
Yeah, the fire department proposal was a little bit different. It was set up by registration fee, we have approximately 1,100 registrations per year. Of those, there's about 100, less than 200 are life hazard uses, which the city doesn't collect any money for, so we'd have to charge a little bit more per registration fee to make up that difference. We rounded it off to a $10 increase on registration fees, which would cover the cost of this new software.
I guess, then, how does it work for, like, so DPW has a problem at this house, and they entered it, is that a transaction?
No, the only...
Or code has the same thing?
Parking schedule is set up based upon who's buying into the system initially. So, and again, in the local communities, we have plenty of applications that are offered up that we don't get any money from, because we make enough money from that department in other areas. So, for example, I use the DPW, the hatch of motion, they have a huge work request system, where they've got, I think, 10, 12,000 work requests that have gone through the system, they don't pay anything for that. But we charge them for street opening permits, and which we also process in the system, and we feel that we make enough from that department in that area that we give them this other product and break. So typically, it's the products, it's the applications that generate revenue for the municipality where we get our...
You take your piece there.
Other counties do work on a flat fee basis.
Okay, so just out of curiosity, like, and we talked about this at the last meeting, Robert, you brought this up, like, we have abandoned properties, right, and we say mow their lawn, and we send them a bill, that would be considered a transaction. Would we be able to see if we collected on that bill via the software?
It would tell us whether it's been paid or not, correct?
Yeah, I mean, somebody would have to enter the information, and you could go on...
We're gonna give you all those files.
The other thing, the other thing that I found that would work for us is, for example, our guys go out and they do an inspection, and they give people a time to comply if they're in violation, they issue a violation notice. This thing spits out the violation notice, you don't have to sit there and write it all out, it spits the violation notice out, and it has a tickler that comes up and will remind them the date of compliance, that that's the day they have to go back out to see if the people comply. Right now, all that's manual, they're writing all the stuff in their diaries, trying to remember what they're supposed to do. This stuff will be coming up in my office as well to tell me where my inspectors are supposed to be that day to follow up with what they're supposed to be doing.
I think, Tom, did you have a question? Tom Gilmore?
No, I just said there's a significant application here for commercial property also, for second option, it's all of us concerned.
And what do you mean?
Well, the other thing I wanted to bring up was the mercantile licensing process, we can plug into this too. I know that's been an issue, you know, who's gonna do that? So this will tie into that.
Yeah, we do Kate Bay parking permits, charter bus permits, individual parking permits on the street. We, in Ocean Township, we had mercantile permits, and that allowed them to then go and do pool permits and backhoe convention permits, which are actually required by the state, but very, very difficult for a town to do. Pet licensing, and these are all kinds of crazy things.
Up north, the city of Englewood uses us in their health department, and they actually have, they're supposed to do a door-to-door survey every year, or every so few years, on pet licensing. So they have, they actually hire kids to go out and go door-to-door, and, you know, we have built them an app for the phone.
They do this, we have 250 applications we're already in the system.
I don't have any more questions, just, Robert, you need to shoot us the cost?
What's your build Ocean Township on an average year?
On an average month?
Year.
About $40, $85, $50,000 a year.
Well, then, we'd have to go out to bid for this, wouldn't we, Fred?
Well, but we're not talking about the construction office, there's a number of departments that Ocean Township uses that you were planning on utilizing.
Why wouldn't we?
If we're gonna do it, why?
God bless, I mean, I agree with you.
I'd like to see us have a little more to do.
If we're gonna do it, why not do it right, but then we'd have to go out to bid, wouldn't we, Fred?
With a contract of that magnitude, yes. Unless it would fit into one of the exceptions, and there is an exception for proprietary computer software, however, built into the MOU that the city has with the state is that for any contract, which the city is planning to use an exception that, you know, wouldn't ordinarily be subject to open competitive bidding, that you nevertheless have to go through a fair and open process, based on the restrictions of the MOU that we have with the state, given your transitional aid status. So most likely, it's gonna have to be put out to bid, and they'd have an opportunity to bid on it. I don't know how many other vendors there are out there that perform this kind of service, but, you know, that's just what we'd have to do in order to properly put this out through the procurement process.
Okay, thank you.
And just so everybody knows, and I'm not looking to kill this, I want more information, like Amy said, but I'm sure Chief, and I'm sure Rob, you guys did not build in $40,000 or $50,000 into your budget for this, for this year, so, and looking at maybe losing $2 million of transitional aid, you know, it may not be doable, so.
If I could speak to that, and the fire department, and that was, it's advantageous, the timing is pretty good, because we're redoing all the city codes. My request was to increase my registration fees by $10, would cover the cost of this, it would be, if we did that, it would be zero impact on the budget.
When are we gonna do that? We gotta do that before we do this.
Right, I understood.
So put that on the next agenda to increase your fees, I have no problem with that.
And that was also part of the code that we're redoing now, and from our perspective, we were looking to increase by the amount we would need to pay for it.
Mr. Mayor, with respect to the total dollars that we'd be asking the number for each attachment, it would be our recommendation that this could be rolled out over a matter of a couple of years in any case, at the very earliest, so that, I think that the first year's initiative is, so we wanna demonstrate to you that we can do everything we tell you we're doing, and so I think that the cost would probably be, my guess is from our conversation with these specific departments, probably in the low twenties.
No, I totally agree, and Ocean Township's 10 times the size of us and everything, so I understand that, Ray grew up in Ocean Township.
No generators.
No generators, but you're ahead of the game. So, yeah, can you get us a little bit more information, Chief and Rob?
Yep, sure.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good seeing you, right? Yeah, I didn't recognize him.
The next matter I'd like to extend it by, Rob McKeon, regarding our abandoned property ordinance. Our copy of ordinance was left in your place as well.
This is the vacant property ordinance that we discussed, this is a continuation from the last workshop session. As you had asked, we drafted the ordinance, and I guess it's on the, for introduction at the council meeting on Wednesday night, so that's the ordinance before you. It basically, essentially, it complements the abandoned properties ordinance, it's already been adopted by the city, in that it addresses vacant property issues that we have around the city, whereas not all vacant properties are considered abandoned properties under the Abandoned Properties Rehabilitation Act. So that this law allows us to deal with properties that are identified as vacant, and the description for the vacant property is set forth in paragraph one there in the ordinance. It has, it allows us to get a grip on the maintenance of these properties, it has a registration requirement, and a fee that will graduate over the first, well, first renewal goes up from 500 the first year to 1,000. first renewal goes up from 500 the first year to 1,000 and then to 1,750 and then to 2,500 for any subsequent renewal. Again, to incentivize people that have these properties to do something with them and to get them under control and maintain them and sell them or fix them up. So I don't know that you want me to go through the whole ordinance. We talked a lot about it at the last meeting. If there's any specific questions, I can answer them for you.
I think more.
Sorry?
Yeah, instead of you going through it all, again, I have some questions.
Sure.
I'm gonna skip a couple easy ones. Let's go to page two, down towards the two, paragraph F. It says this throughout the proposed ordinance several times. The municipal officer may extend the waiver of registration fee for not more than one year. I always think, and every department tries to do that, I think now that should be with advice and consent of council.
That's fine.
Just, that's the same thing.
Do you wanna add that?
On page three, it would be the same thing under page.
With advice and consent of council.
Right, on page three, four B, an owner who is a natural person. What the hell does that mean?
I'm sorry, hold on one second. What page?
Page three.
Four.
Four B. An owner who is a natural person. What does that mean?
As opposed to a corporate entity.
As opposed to corporation or LLC.
Okay.
That's, that's one of the problems we have and that's one of the problems that this will address in another section is that.
I guess I'm a, I'm not a normal person.
We have a lot of properties that are owned in the city by LLCs and it's, they play shell games and when it comes time to issue summonses and violation notices, we can't find.
It's the proper verbiage that I hadn't seen before. Okay, so page four, five B. At least 80% of all fees incoming and resowned from the application of this ordinance shall be used for the sole purpose. Why wouldn't it be 100%?
Well, this is, this is taken from the model from all the other ordinances that I got from around the state and that's what the number they used, so.
Okay, we're only gonna put 80%, where's the other 20% go?
Well, the other, there's another portion there. If you look further down, it allows us to enter into agreements with, let me find it for you. Paragraph eight B, the city may enter into agreements with qualified nonprofit entities and neighborhood associations to assist the city.
I'm gonna get to that one. Okay, we'll get to that one later.
Okay, well, it allows us to pay them a percentage of the fees collected from the owners of the properties identified and registered as a result of the actions for their services.
Okay, let's go to same page, page four, six C. And this is something that somebody from the audience brought up and I totally agree with them. If it's an abandoned property, why would we put out a big sign saying, hey, here's an abandoned property coming to steal my copper pipes?
Well, the reason that's there is to make sure that people know how to contact the person that's responsible for the property so that it cuts some of the process out of people contacting us directly, that if there's a problem, they can call them. And frankly, it puts everybody on notice and it's kinda, that's the law throughout the state. That's the way it works with these ordinances.
Okay, but we go with this jungle lasers tracking system software, it's all gonna be readily available to everybody, so why would we need signs out there?
Yeah, I think putting signs out there, Robert, is a terrible idea. You're just attracting homeless people and drug dealing, no signs out front.
I'd be glad to pull that out if that's what you want me to do.
Number seven, I have problems with requiring people to put that type of insurance. I guess that's because everybody else in the state does it, but I mean, abandoned property, if I own an abandoned property that's worth $100,000 and I'll maintain it, you're asking me to put $300,000 worth of insurance on it?
Well, I, what I think you need to understand is that the bulk of these properties that this ordinance addresses are properties that are in foreclosure and the entities that will be paying these registration fees, paying to maintain the properties and taking care of them while they're in this process are gonna be mortgage holders. They're either out-of-state mortgage holders or people that are, you know, mortgage holders that are in-state. And if they're out-of-state, they have to appoint an in-state representative to take care of them. So that's not a big number for these companies and I think it's reasonable because a lot of things can happen at those properties and then.
For a company, maybe, but say I'm just John Moore, John Drew Public and I own a house that was given to me by my parents, it's 15D Witt Avenue, and it's assessed, it's assessed over $80,000 and you're telling me to insure it for $300,000?
But it's just another reason why, if you have the property rather than just leave it vacant, you should either use it or sell it. We're trying to incentivize people not to have these vacant properties around the city.
Okay, I hear you, but for some reason, it doesn't compute to me. That doesn't mean it's wrong.
Is that something that I should pull out of there or are you?
Well, let me just, let me just get it clear. So, so if it's a bank or a company that's holding the property, we don't, and they're foreclosure, I'm not worried about that. I don't think we're worried about that. What we're worried about is the individual who owns the property but has not been, so the individual would be somebody who's not living there, right? And is, owns the property and we're trying to get them to move either to sell the property or to.
Well, again, we have to go back to, we have to kinda go back to what the vacant property is identified or the definition at the beginning of the ordinance. It means any building or structure not at present legally occupied or at which all lawful business or construction operations or residential or other occupancy has substantially ceased and which is in such condition that it cannot legally be reoccupied without repair or rehabilitation, including but not limited to any property, meeting the definition of abandoned property in the law that we've talked about, provided, however, that any habitable property where all building systems are in sound working order, where the building and grounds are maintained in good condition and which is being actively marketed by its owner for sale or rental, shall not be deemed a vacant property for purpose of the ordinance. So it, this ordinance is to address those properties that are just being allowed to sit there, dilapidated, vacant, and no one's doing anything about it.
So we're trying to push that individual to fix it or sell?
Sell.
They can't just sit on their hands anymore?
Right, right.
Is the point. And the insurance is just another push?
Because it is, it is a crazy problem that we have in code enforcement with constantly getting calls about properties where there's squatters, there's, and, you know, we're out there all the time and these properties are just falling down and nobody's doing anything. And we are sending DPW over to do the repairs, boarding them up. They're, you know, people are still taking the boards out and getting in there. We gotta reboard them. The grass has to get cut, the snow has to get shoveled and we're paying for that. So this is designed to start collecting some of the money.
We're paying for it, but we're putting a lien on it that we'll get when it's sold.
But what, do we really collect?
As I said previously, that hasn't necessarily worked in the last.
Yes, when they're sold, yes.
And we want it to move is the main thing.
And by when they're sold, right?
And you generate.
All right, listen, that's fine.
And you generate 18% interest on it.
But that's not necessarily what's been happening, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, but that's a mistake by past administrations. But again, let's just say, okay, my family's owned a house on Fourth Avenue for three generations and I live out of state and I decided to board it up, paint the boards, the right color is the trim. I have somebody cutting the grass, I have somebody doing everything, and it's assessed at $100,000.
Is it habitable?
Yes.
Then it's not on the list.
It's not violation. If you're taking care of your house, it's not a violation. You're not in this whole ordinance.
Well, then, people on this list that you're giving us are taking care of their houses and they're on the list, so that's the catch 22 to me. I mean, you got the Spagnola House on Second and Grant. It's one of the oldest houses in Asbury Park.
That's not habitable.
It's not habitable.
That's not a habitable house.
Who says who? But when was that anybody last time in it? I mean, it's boarded up.
Is the plumbing working? Is the electric working? I mean, all that has.
I don't know. Do you know that?
But that's the point. That our, our department would be responsible to go out and make a determination if it's habitable, if this ordinance is passed. It's one of the jobs we would have.
Maybe I'll use a poor example. It just seems to me like there could be somebody out there that's like struggling and wants to bring this house back to habitable, but by putting a $300,000 insurance policy on a house that's worth $80,000, we're forcing them into like bankruptcy.
Well, I think that there's a clause in there that actually gives our department discretion to waive some of the requirements for a period.
And for every one of those, there's 100 that are bringing down neighborhoods.
Right.
But we don't have 100 of them.
And it also allows us to kinda get a timeline and some control over them.
Goes back to my question from two weeks ago, then how come the Esperanza's not on this list? Because it was never habitable?
It was never habitable.
There was never a structure that was livable, habitable.
Well, well, then force it. I mean, put it on there.
I can't make the laws read something of a cousin. I mean, that's, that's not the state law.
I didn't see that.
But there was a talk, and this is a separate topic, but you talked about a vacant lot ordinance, because it would fall more under a vacant lot.
That's great. That's separate from this.
So if we wanted to address that.
We can do that separately.
Which is gonna catch all the abandoned properties that we miss.
That's a vacant lot?
Well, according to Rob.
That would probably fall under a vacant lot.
You're paying taxes on those.
Because I believe when I read the vacant lot ordinance in Jersey City, it addressed lots that had partially constructed structures.
Okay, we'll go to page five. Eight A, I didn't have a clue what it means, so if you want, try to explain that to me.
I'm sorry?
Eight A.
Eight A is that we would establish an online registry of all properties registered with the city under the ordinance. Again, I, personally, I think it's important that we start to, you know, ask the citizens to interact. What I've found when I've talked to some of these other towns is they said that the minute they pass these types of ordinances and they put them out to the public and they notify their citizens that they've adopted these laws, that's when they start to get people calling in and notifying them about properties that they didn't even know were vacant or abandoned. I mean, we can go around, my guys drove around and found 45 or 50 properties that are boarded up that are easily identified as abandoned properties. But when I talked to the guys from Roselle in Jersey City, they said it triples, but when you do these laws and the citizens find out, you start to get calls about it three times the number of that you know that are big, abandoned or vacant.
Okay, eight B is something you started to address before. So to me, it's almost like a bounty system. Hey, turn in your neighbor and we're gonna pay you a percent. What percent were you paying for the bounty system?
I'm sorry?
Eight B.
That's, that's talking about, say, interstate neighbors.
If somebody comes, rats their neighbor out, they get paid by the city.
That's, that's not what that's meant.
That's what it says.
That's, well.
The city of Asbury Park may enter into agreements with qualified nonprofit extension entities and neighborhood associations with, I don't know what a neighborhood association is, to assist the city to enforce this ordinance, including but not limited to identification of unregistered properties that may be subject to this ordinance and may provide for payment by the city to such entities of a percentage of the fees collected from the owners of the properties identified and registered as a result of this action, such entities. So it is a bounty system that somebody's turning in somebody and.
But it doesn't mean we have to pay for it. It's, we can enter into agreements to do it. It gives us the ability to do it.
Okay, what percentage? It doesn't say what.
Well, it doesn't, that's our discretion. It doesn't, it's not set there.
Well, I think that should be defined.
I, I don't know that I agree with that.
Okay.
That we need to set it specific. I think that it should be taken on a case-by-case basis.
Well, what scares me is like, Amy rats me out and she gets 100%. Yvonne rats me out and she gets 10%. Where's, I mean, it's not be like, you know.
But Mr. Mayor, those types of agreements would come before you and the council for approval. So it's upon advice and consent of council.
Well, that's why I didn't say before and we'll go to.
And even, even less than like ratting people out, it's citizens on patrols who drive up and down the streets. Resident watch, neighborhood watches, people on next door, any of those people who see houses.
It's what makes these programs work is when the citizens interact with us.
And nine, again, add council's consent.
You're getting this.
Great.
You're getting them.
Yes.
Sure. Ten, the last sentence, fines assessed under this chapter shall be recoverable from the owner and shall be a lien on the property. Unless I'm reading this wrong, it's like double jeopardy. You're getting the fine and I've also put a lien on the guy. Is that a typo or am I reading wrong?
Fines assessed under this shall be recoverable from the owner and shall be lien, well, it means that they're recoverable from the owner, but until it's recovered, it's a lien on the property. That's the legal terminology. It's recoverable, meaning he owes it.
What happened?
But that's, that's the way you, it's just like I'm taking a mortgage. You have a lien on the property until he sells the property, it gets paid when he sells the property, when he pays his taxes.
And I guess the, again, page five, the third paragraph from the bottom, you further deem that all ordinance or past ordinance is inconsistent hereby or hereby repealed? I guess that's the standard language. Are there, do we know of any now? Do we know of any now?
I don't.
Okay.
No.
There's all the questions.
This is meant to complement your current abandoned properties ordinance that you adopted in 2012 and that was amended in September of last year.
That was before all five of this.
I understand.
Truthfully, I didn't read it. And it's been a total failure, so, because it was never enforced. So we're moving forward. And I'm all for this. I'm all for this. I just wanted to do it right the first time. So, I mean, this is, this is good.
Yeah.
But I understand from our conversation that we had that you're concerned about the funding and I, what I, I hope you understand is that this is the way it happens everywhere and these fees that we're imposing are actually on the low side. There are towns that go up to $5,000 for subsequent renewals and they're getting it. And what happens is the minute that this is adopted, these lenders that are holding these properties that are in foreclosures, they automatically just start seeing checks come into the city and to register because they know that if they don't register, then they're assessed these fines of the 2,500 up to $2,000 per day for not registering. So this is money that we need to bring in to pay for the services we're providing for these properties because no one else is doing it.
And, yeah, I'm also absolutely supportive. I think it's a step in the right direction. Can we put in, to the mayor's point on point number seven, some ability to use discretion within individual homeowners? Is it not there already?
Sure.
You know, with you as the officer and the council approval or review, whatever you decide. So there's, if there's a person that John's describing, which doesn't seem to be the case.
Sure.
There could be discretion.
Within the discretion of the public officer and/or upon advice of mayor and council? Advice and consent of mayor and council?
Yes.
They go.
And you, and you take out the signs, right? You're going to take out the signs, right?
I already took them out. I crossed them out. Personally, I, I think that there should be some identification, but I would be glad to pull it out completely.
Any other questions?
You know, can I just comment one more time on that sign issue? It also has something to do, what I've talked about with the other cities that do it, is identifying these properties for purposes of emergency services like fire.
Fire department has a code to put a triangle...
That's, that's, that's kind of along those same lines, that they know that that's an abandoned property and they know that, you know, that there shouldn't be anybody in there and then who to contact, et cetera, if there's a problem. So it's right there.
Any other questions, concerns?
You missed that.
Okay, we will revise the ordinance accordingly and bring it back to you for your consideration at Wednesday's meeting.
Thank you.
Next matter on your agenda are letter D's, appointments to boards and commissions. Boards, commissions, and committees.
What happened to D one?
D one's gone.
D one.
It's not on our agenda.
No, that's your, we have a...
It's not on the new agenda?
We have revised.
Well, I didn't get it revised. I'm sorry, okay. I'm sorry, I got here late. I was in court all day, so I apologize. So I didn't get, so D one's off?
D one is on.
Why?
We, we've got some additional information. All right, on that there, we just have to get permission from the state on our number of inventory.
D one...
We're ready to move on that.
Wednesday?
Possibly, if we can get in touch with the state. Tom has been trying to contact an individual of the state to give us permission. As soon as we're able to get the permission, we'll be able to, all right, start charging at the garage.
I believe we already have permission. And just so the public knows, D one said, it was just removed discussion items, parking garage, it should have said parking garage and city hall parking lot. And something I've been trying to push since January first. I'm not saying we're going to enforce it. I'm just saying, we all know the parking report's going to say, start charging for the parking garage, start charging for city hall parking lots. And all I want to do is like, pass the resolution so when we pave the city hall parking lot, when we're ready to get permission from the state, it's on record and we don't have to wait three more months to like effort to implement it. So I mean...
But you're not going to start charging Bangs Ave. now, right?
No, because we can't, but we can put it...
Because we tout that as free parking for downtown.
We can put it in the ordinance and then pass it anytime we want. We can redo the ordinance and we, same as we can do, redo the ordinance right now for city hall parking lot. We can put that in there and not, not charge, but at least it's done. Or else come May, when we pass this, then we're going to say, okay, now we got to introduce it, we got to do this, we got to do three readings, and we're into August. So I mean, let's just get it over with. I mean, it's a no brainer. If the parking report does not say to charge for this lot and that lot, I'll pay. I mean, we know it's going to say that.
It's in there.
Okay, so why not start the process? The process is a start. And we don't even, the parking report also says you should look at your rates. Well, if we change downtown rates and we change, then we change Bangs Ave. rates and the city hall parking rates at the same time. So just get it on the ordinance, same as the rest of downtown, and just get it over with. Again, since January, I've been trying to do this. So I mean, it's just like, hmm, okay, it was cool. Appointments to boards and commissions.
Um, I have one.
Okay.
With the Code Quality of Life Commission, Committee, the people who are going to be serving are Jim Van Tool, David Ottley, Peter Siegel, Stephen Brunner, Norman Robertson, Michelle McGuire, Trudy Syfax, Ellie K. Mackean, and Danny Weiss. Oh, I'm sorry, and Tom Gilmore.
I had the AP TV committees, but I sent it to Melody. I, I, can we do it, can you put it on for Wednesday and then I'll write them down?
Send me the list. Send me the real list.
I think you're CC, I'll send it to you again, but Melody has all the applica, all the applications and I wrote down all the people. All right, I'll do it Wednesday.
Yvonne, if you can send me the list.
Yeah, I'll send you the list.
I'll give it to you now, when, at the end of the day.
Okay, Tony, next.
Okay, letter E, review of agenda items for your March eleventh regular meeting. Any questions about your regular meeting agenda for Wednesday?
I had, I had one. The resolution for the beach closing, we had times on there, which we have nine to five Monday through Friday and nine to six on the weekends. Are those the times that Joe and Garrett decided? They're different than last year, so if he's, if they're going to, I just want whatever we pass here to be what they do down at the beach.
That's what was provided to us through, all right, through Joe.
So...
Are they different?
Through Joe and Garrett. Now, I'm, I'm chess with him again tomorrow.
Well, last year, the guards were on until six on the, on the weekdays and seven on the weekends, which is not the same as this.
No, the beach was six. Guards may have stayed on, but the beach, the bars have taken...
The beaches were closed.
Okay, so they're not taking tags anymore, but the guards are still there. So this is in reference only to the paint. This is not in reference to when the guards are on at all.
About it.
Is that right?
Let's just make sure there's no other changes, and there is one change.
That's the weekend.
That change, sure.
Correct. I thought somebody was going to be here making a presentation. I guess that's Wednesday.
You want Garrett here, I'll get Mike Garrett here.
Well, I think the public should know what we're changing here. Else you can do it. Else you can do it.
Anything else?
Nothing on the agenda, but I have a couple of quick questions. Is it that time?
No.
No? What time is it?
Public participation. May have a motion to open the public comment portion of the meeting with a three-minute time limit, all right, for each speaker.
Second.
And who's going to run the clock? Do you, do you...
Councilman Kendall.
You could...
Yes.
Councilwoman Warner. Councilwoman Clayton.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn.
Yes.
Mayor Moore.
Yes. Would I like, anybody like to be heard at this time?
Public is expected to conduct themselves in a proper manner. Any derogatory, abusive, or threatening statements by will not be permitted. The chair will immediately rule such conduct out of order and after appropriate warning, may terminate any further comments by the speaker.
I think I got it.
Good evening. Pat Cohen, Ocean Avenue. I have nothing against food trucks. I think that they do have a place, but not in front of a residential building on Ocean Avenue. When I purchased nine years ago, the building wasn't even up. And the redevelopment plan showed it as a quiet residential zone and that there would be a couple of restaurants, some retail shops, and that was it. Now, we're getting food trucks, which I, I just can't understand. The noise, the pollution, increase in rodents, and Sixth Avenue, as you probably know, is a wind tunnel. I can see all the trash blowing straight down Sixth Avenue. As it is, after the weekends, the residents usually run around picking up trash from people that have been visiting the beach. So I can imagine it would be much more. Now, I thought of an alternative for the food trucks. Originally, they told me at the TRC meeting, the trucks were going to come up to the Sunset Avenue entrance because there's a curb cut, come along the boardwalk. So why couldn't they line up in front of the boarded up pavilion, which is an eyesore anyway? They don't need signage. Everybody from the beach would see them. People walking on the beach would see them. They don't need lights, got boardwalk lights. And if they want tables, in my opinion, all the restaurants downtown pay for the square footage for outside tables. City could make some money on this. Any ideas or thoughts on that?
So the only thing, so, Pat?
Yes.
What I believe the WRA allows on that property are amusements, recreation, and restaurants. So, and I'm, and I'm not saying those can't be quiet. I'm just saying there's a disconnect in what, what, and I don't know if an attorney told you that or a real estate agent, but what you were told when you bought and what is permitted.
No, we looked at the redevelopment plan when, before we even bought.
Okay, so there's amusement...
No games of chance is part of it.
Okay, I have amusements, recreations, and restaurants are allowed on that property from our attorney and from Don.
Okay.
And I'll go back and I'll, I'll reread it. I've read it a hundred times, but I will read that, read it again.
That must maybe a revised redevelopment plan?
Are you looking at the two thousand and two?
Uh, no, I would have looked at it before that.
Well, the WRA and then there would, there would have been subsequent redevelopers' plans after that.
I didn't look at the two thousand and two then.
Well, I look at two thousand and two and then you look at the, the redevelopment plans after. I don't have a problem getting clarification, but I'll be honest, I called Don today and I called Carl from Scotland.
Right.
And it's my interpretation, or it's their interpretation, who we pay, that, that permitted uses are, are amusements, golf courses, water parks, restaurants, pop-ups. So, so I, all I'm saying is I just want to all, however anyone decides on this, I want to make sure we all have the same facts.
Okay.
And whether or not that this is a permitted use. And it's my understanding, and I'm sorry, Don's not here, that technically it's a permitted use.
Food trucks?
Food trucks, technically. That is their interpretation. Now, the, the, it doesn't mean that this is going to pass or not pass.
Right.
I'm, I'm not suggesting that anyway. I just want to all have the same facts on it.
Okay.
So I know, because I obviously read your comments and I know you and you've emailed me, generators were a major problem for you.
Yes.
So we, if we, if we, obviously, if we eliminate generators, hours were a major problem for you, right? We get some control of the hours.
Yes.
Trash, understandably, we get some control of the trash. So I understand where you're coming from. Is it the idea, the concept that you, you just don't think should be there? Or are there ways that we can make this concept and, and make, and take your concerns and validate them because they're quite frankly all valid concerns? Is there a way we can get control of this that will meet your, your issues? Or is the whole concept not something that you want to see there?
It's a carnival-like atmosphere.
Okay.
It really is. And why can't you put, I think if it were up in front of the boarded up pavilion, it would be a buffer for any noise. The building would provide buffer. The trash would be contained all up on the boardwalk and it'd...
I don't think anyone's fighting you on the Sunset Avenue pavilion, right?
No, no, but I'm saying, I wonder if anybody ever considered that.
Okay, appreciate it, and do you want to read this? That's what the sense was.
Okay, tenants shall have the right to miniature golf, volleyball, games, amusement rides, indoor and outdoor restaurants and cafes, preparation of the sale of food and beverages, sale of goods and merchandise, flea markets, open air stands and kiosks. So the only point I'm making to you, Pat, is we should have the same information when we make this determination. You should have what I have.
Is this for the North End?
Yes.
Yes.
When was that changed?
It's been, there's been so many agreements. It's busy in terms of, there's a number of agreements that pertain to the WRA, meaning the WRA, the subsequent redevelopers' agreement. There's parking agreements. There's, there's a plethora, but I will get you what I have. So at least you know whatever decision I make, you had the same information that I had.
And, and what I would...
June first, two thousand and ten.
So that would be the lease.
Right, that's...
Probably the lease.
And that could speak to my first question about the lease versus the waterfront redevelopment document. So, and I know exactly what you're talking about because it was in two thousand and one and two thousand and two when we had the meetings here and we had the meetings at the Berkeley. What was sold was a commercial entertainment district and a more naturalistic, quiet residential district. That was, that was what was sold. Now, that's changed a lot because now I start watching residential everywhere, but that's what was sold back then. So I, I understand your concerns and I just think we have to be clear about what's from the lease and what's from the WRA.
Right.
Next.
Hi, Order of Balmgartner, Fifth Avenue. Looks like you owe me six minutes there.
Six seconds.
All right, anyway, just to clarify the discussion that you're currently having a little bit, you're stuck between a rock and a hard place, counsel, because there's two...
Which issue?
There's two elements to this whole thing. As you are aware, there's the redevelopment plan, which is the vision, and then there's the contract between the developer and the city. Unfortunately, there was a disconnect over the years. There are elements in the contract not supported by the vision of the plan. It happened, you're kind of stuck with it at this point, and I guess you're going to have to make a judgment call on that as to whether the plan, as it was envisioned, should supersede what the contractual obligation is with your redeveloper agreement. So you have some head scratching to do there. I do recall reading in the redeveloper agreement that you can charge property tax even though this is public property. It does in there say someplace, if I recall correctly. Okay, just, well, just so the public knows, that's great. So there is, there is tax collected on these improved public properties, all right? So there is some benefit to the city in that. I would like to make a suggestion. I heard mention about landscaping along the perimeter and that there would be berms and gravel and things like that. The gravel has proven itself to be a bad idea. Just look at where the gravel is every place else at the beachfront. It ends up all over the walkways. It's a tripping hazard, it's unsightly, it requires constant cleanup. If you do go ahead and approve this, you should demand that a grass buffer be put between any gravel and public walkways, just to contain the gravel if nothing else. And if Madison Marquette were smart, they would probably do that, which they are, they would probably do that in all the other areas where they have gravel abutting public walkways, just to contain it and eliminate the mess and the headache of it. So that, that's my two cents on that. Thank you.
Thank you, Order. Next.
Yes, Ralph Mitchley, fifteen oh one Ocean. Unfortunately, I was sitting over here, so I couldn't see the plans. I was here at the TRC committee and that time there was no topography shown on the plan whatsoever. The site, as was said here, is considered to be level. It's not level. The boardwalk is higher than the road. I would guess about five feet. But you're definitely going to have to do some grading work on this property if you're going to try and put trucks in that have to be level. You're going to have to build some sort of pad or something for these to drive onto and then to be stored on while they're in operation. Heard nothing about that. Any of the, like he said, the gravel or any kind of temporary stabilization of the dirt, you got a week of rain, it's going to be gone. Finally, when I bought in June two thousand and eight, I called the city and asked what the property was owned for. I was told it was a redevelopment plan and I understand from talking to the planner at the TRC meeting that he believes this is a permitted use within the plan, but not specifically this parcel. This parcel is at the end of Sixth Avenue. It is a flared avenue. There's an ordinance that he himself cited at the TRC committee that says no structures at the end of flared avenues. You're flying in the face of this. Put in a temporary truck? That's still a structure to me if I got to open my window and smell it.
End of comment.
It might have been permanent. And I just talked to Don today to get clarification. He may have been referring to permanent structures which would not be allowed.
So a temporary one is good?
A temporary one is permitted. I'm, I'm not judging whether it's good or bad.
Well, I, I don't think that the, if the ordinance doesn't say no temporary, if it's saying no permanent structure at the end of any flared avenue, but then you put a bunch of trucks there that are there at every waking hour, doesn't that fly in the face of what the ordinance is trying to do, which is to keep the flared avenues open?
Okay, I think, I think we, okay, okay, I'll think, I'll, let me think about it a little bit.
Thank you. Yes.
Hi, I'm Maggie Quentin from Ocean Avenue also. And while I'm hearing that this could be permitted within plans and things like that, I would just like you to respectfully keep considering that this is my home. I live there full-time. I'm not a beach person there. I'm just, I'm not there on vacation. And this would be a big impact with the noise, with the parking, with the smells. It would be a constant for me and I would hear it all the time. So I know it, they have the right to do things, but we're also living there now and we are part of this city and we are the, the growth of the city and I'd like you to consider that. And I, I also had a question on how much they were going to charge for these temporary food trucks. What rent would they be getting? And that, I think, is a big part of the plan. So thank you.
Thank you.
Jim Henry, Sixth Avenue. I'd just like to make a point. Mayor Moore gave an example concerning the proposed ordinance on the abandoned properties. I don't know that you can get a three hundred thousand dollar insurance policy on an eighty thousand dollar property. I, I just don't think any insurance company is going to write that kind of insurance. So if you have a piece of property that's valued under the, the smallest limit of your, I'm sorry, the, the limit on your, in your ordinance, I don't think you can insure that property. I just, I think somebody needs to check with the insurance companies to find out whether that's a possibility. And just one other comment concerning the green space opposite Sixth Avenue where they're talking about putting in the food trucks and stuff. I'm not sure that that was the original location of the Bocchi Courts, but the Bocchi Courts, I believe in the redevelopment plan, were supposed to be reconstructed. And I think that was the general location. It may have been Seventh Avenue, I'm not sure.
I thought it was Seventh Avenue.
Further down.
Further down?
Yeah, I think it's closer to Asbury Towers.
Okay, well, then that, my comment concerning that then is a moot point. Thank you.
Thanks, Jim.
Can just, can you just follow up on that, Rob? That question that Jim had? And not tonight necessarily, but just checking.
Nita Congress, fifteen oh one Ocean Avenue. And I just wanted to say, to me, the most important word that was said here tonight was by you, Joe Warner. You said goal. What is the goal? And that was such a smart question. And everything I hear from the council is all about goals and long-term planning and And everything I hear from the council is all about goals and long-term planning, and what are the impacts, and what... Where is this gonna go, and what's the purpose? And that's so smart, and it's such a pleasure to hear that. And the stuff I hear from Madison Marquette, with all due respect, we've gone to this the second meeting, is just seems like a great idea. We're not gonna make any money. No, we're not gonna do anything that's long-term. Gee, we don't know. And it just doesn't sound like a really great plan. I just don't see any longevity. I don't see any purpose. I don't see, if you're not gonna make any money, then why are you doing it? And so, that's it.
Thank you. Anybody else like to be heard?
Hi, Ruth Ann Harrison. I just had one comment about the insurance also. Is it possible they're looking for $300,000 in liability insurance? Because that makes more sense to me. I don't think you're gonna be able to get insurance for the property that's worth $80,000 at $300,000. It's probably $300,000 liability. So, if somebody trips on your property, you're covered liability-wise. So, just thought I'd throw that in. And thank you for everything you guys do.
That's what it said, it says $300,000 liability for residential, for units, commercial property.
Good job.
Hi, I'm Walter Andrica, 1501 Ocean Avenue. My wife and I have lived there for two years now, and we've just made the decision to become permanent residents, and we're buying a place in North Beach, prior to hearing about the food trucks and all that. Now, I'm having second thoughts about it. But one of the comments made is that there's increased traffic in North Beach. And one of the reasons why there's increased traffic in North Beach and on that beach is people go there, because it's a lot quieter than the South Side. And they want that. We like that. We like the tranquility. We wanna get something to eat. We walk through Convention Hall, use the vendors there, the food vendors in there, or walk to the South Park and use the food vendors there. What's gonna happen to the income of those vendors who are existing now if food trucks take all this business away from those people that would take a walk on the boardwalk and visit the other concessions? That's the only thing that I can think of. There's no economic sense. If they're not making any money, I mean, anybody with a business sense knows, why would you do something if you're not making money? What's the point? You wanna provide people with food? It's not gonna provide people with the food. They already have that with a short walk. Stretch your legs out a little bit after laying in the sand for two hours. My God. But to turn around and say, "We're not gonna make money, and we wanna offer this service to people," I think that's a crock. I'm sorry, I feel that way. Thank you.
Thank you.
And I would just say, in Madison's defense, I think, and maybe I'll save it for the comments, but I think the idea is, and what I would say is, the plan is not laid out clearly enough, but that they would like to have incremental steps to get to where they wanna go on the boardwalk, and this would be maybe a step. What I would like to see is, like, where that step fits in the larger picture.
Hi, I'm Nancy Martner. I live at North Beach. And what I'd like the mayor and the council to at least consider is not to let this get pushed through, because then there will be no control. And I just feel like it's a rush job, and we haven't heard all the information, we haven't come up with certain parameters. I know the garbage cans and having six feet of fence is not gonna work, because I walked past Langousta Lounge, and there's rats this big by the garbage that's left out at night. It scared me. And again, the litter, people toss it, you know? They're having a good time, they're sitting at a picnic table, the papers fly. I go, and I personally pick up papers. So, I just don't think it's a good idea, and I definitely would think for Wednesday's meeting, I would not like to see it just passed.
Thank you. Motion closed. Move it. Second. Motion to shut this off.
Counselman Kendall?
Yes.
Counselman Warner?
Yes.
Counselwoman Clayton?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
Matters from the city council?
Joe? I got two quick things.
You can get quick, Joe.
I'm just gonna clarify. So, I'm actually... You probably wouldn't get it from here, but I think the food trucks are a decent idea, done in the right way, in the context of a larger plan. So, what I'm afraid of is that, what you just said, which is a rush job, and it not being done right. And the concern is that it needs to be part of a larger strategy. I beat the last council up for not having a long-term vision, and for us, I think we need to absolutely have how this fits into a larger plan for the North Beach. So, that's my overall take on the issue right now.
Move on.
I'm inclined to agree with Joe, in that we have to take into consideration the concerns and the people who are living close to the food truck. And that before we can make a decision, before we... Or against, we need more information... Sorry. That before we can make any decisions, we need more information from Madison Marquette, because as it is right now, we can't. One other item. Tony, I'd like for the city council to pass a resolution recognizing the Asbury Park High School debate team. They just came in second in a debate in New York City, and... And three members of the debate team received individual awards. So, I'd like the city council to recognize that.
That'll be out for next week's meeting, meeting in two weeks.
Okay. Thank you.
Jesse.
About two weeks ago, one of our traffic guards got hit by a car, and she was had emergency surgery on her both legs, on her skull, and she really wasn't doing that well. And what happened was, as soon as Mayor Moore found out about it, he went up there, and he talked to her after the surgery, a couple of days afterwards. And I've been knowing his family for a long time, so I went up to see her, and she said, "I thank God, but I thank the council, and tell Mayor Moore that I appreciate everything that he had done, and the council also." So, just keep this lady in prayer, and... Thank you.
Amy?
Nothing.
Thank you, Jesse. And we had talked, we... Entire council sent Mrs. Jojo, Josephine Coleman, Getwellard Guard, and so I went, but it was all behalf of the entire council. And two quick things. Couple weeks ago, Pam Lamerton brought up that the ban shell may be public property, not, and I know Amy forwarded that to our lawyers, and we haven't gotten a response.
Yeah, I got a response.
Oh, well, can you share it with us, maybe?
Yeah. No, I got a response.
Okay. And then Fred, for you.
Yeah.
You keep secrets.
No, no, I assumed it went to everybody.
Okay. Fred, a couple things. It came up at a budget meeting. Some leases are up, be it transportation center, be it the Swan Boats, be it the Stand-Up Paddle Board, and this mayor and council wants to renew the leases. But we want to go out to bid with a minimum price. Nobody's gonna rent something for $250, what it costs us $1,000 for you to draw up the legal fees. So, it's gonna be a minimum bid, we'll set, plus attorney fees associated with it. So, when are we gonna follow through with that, since all these leases have expired, and nobody's, like, paying the rent?
Well, the transportation leases definitely are up, but the concessions all have one more summer season.
I don't think the Swans do.
They do. They do. I just forwarded all the concession agreements to Tony recently, and you have the Swan Boats, the Stand-Up Paddle, the private surfing lessons at the beachfront, the gentleman up at the beach who does the beach chairs and umbrellas. They were awarded for a five-year period of time, and all of them have one more summer season.
Okay. Fine. You guys can share information with us, too, sometimes. What we... Okay, for next year, what we want in future leases also is, like, it used to be, like, when I had a place on the boardwalk, and everybody had a place on the boardwalk, you rent, and you also put the year's rent as escrow, so when you skip town, we're not holding the bag. So, if I rented the Swan Boats for $10,000, I would give you $10,000 for my first year, and $10,000 in an escrow account, in case you skipped on me the second year. So, that's something this mayor and council is gonna be demanding in future leases.
That's fine. And also, just know that even though the contractors have rights to the summer season of 2015, there are several of the agreements that indicated that the price that they'll be paying to the city is something that is negotiable with the city. So, in the past, the city manager has negotiated the amount and submitted to mayor and council for their approval, and we anticipate bringing these to you within the next, probably the next meeting.
Okay. Well, thank you. That's all I have. That's it?